I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's bound prayer. Almighty God, our Father, a privilege to come before you again on behalf of the community. Father, we bring to you ideas and dreams and thoughts and plans. Father, we ask you to clarify those in the hearts and the minds of the men and women leading this community, that all things will be done to make this a great community, beneficial for families and children. Thank you, Father, for your blessings, and we seek your guidance through all of this. We thank you for your unending protection for our community, and we give you praise and thankfulness in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Please be seated. Mr. January, could you call the role, please, of the council?
Sure, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton. Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Here.
President Bella.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. And let the record show that this Leo is here.
All present, yes.
Moving on to special presentations honoring Ella DeYoung's mural, and I'll call on Chaz to kind of lead up this one.
Yeah, we're very honored tonight to have a young artist over here. If you've been on the Erie Lacoona Trail recently and have gone by the tunnel that goes under US 30, you will have seen a beautiful mural that was done by Ella DeYoung, 13-year-old, who donated it to the town. So I'm turning over to Tracy to give a little background about this.
So when the street department took over the park maintenance last year, the wall on the south side of the tunnel on Route 30 was just an eyesore. I don't think we had taken care of it for many years, probably 10 years. And we wanted definitely to brighten that up. So we specifically wanted a mural over there, and we wanted everybody to be able to enjoy it. So the street department cleaned and prepped the wall, and Ella agreed to paint the mural. By the way, Ella is the 13-year-old local artist here. She lives in Lake County. Ella came up with a plan, and with the help of the street department, her mom, her grandmother getting her there, dealing with the heat, the elements, the rain, the bugs, the bucket truck, all the above, Ella executed her plan. The mural turned out beautiful on the Erie Lacoona, as you can see. Brightened up that whole area. So we are so proud of you, Ella, and the work you've created for us. Thank you so much.
You're gonna have to stand eventually, Ella, so you might as well come up.
I will say before we invite her up that...
Come up to the podium if you don't mind.
Yeah, please come on up, you and your family. When we posted about this, it took off. Everyone loved it. The amount of comments were just fantastic. So many people saying, "Thank you," just how much it brightened up their days when they go past here. And there was over 230,000 views so far, and we continue to get more, continue to get more comments. And we'll show you real quick, people even take selfies over by it, so. So you have people taking selfies, and then Ella got a lot of recognition, was even in a magazine, local magazine, featuring her as well, so. Thank Ella with a certificate of appreciation from the town, as well as a little goodie bag for you with some town gear in there. And we didn't want to forget about your little brother over there, so we got one. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ella, I do want to ask you, what, how did you think of the design? Would you kind of share a story with us a little bit? And welcome to public speaking.
She's an artist, not a talker. Gotcha.
I think she had lots of options.
Okay.
And I asked her to just be creative and pick what you thought, and I think if they have been her model, one of them said that she knew that we really liked the flowers because of 93rd Avenue, so she chose the flowers.
Oh.
Okay. So did you draw it first, or did you just start painting it as it come to you?
I drew it first.
You drew it out? Okay. All right. Now, you know that we have a lot of other blank walls in town.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask, Mr. President, there are two sides to the I-65 Tunnel, Ella, that I would love to see painted.
So give that some thought.
There's a request on Facebook as well. Plenty of people have been asking about that. There's even people saying that if she was looking for things to do, that they would love to have her do a residential mural, and even somebody said that he would pay her to paint his van.
Wow. There we go.
Also, there's a thing coming up, and, but yeah, we couldn't thank you more for everything that you've done. You've really brightened up our community and brought a lot of pride to our community. So thank you.
Nice job, Ella. Thank you. And nice job, parents, too.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Chaz, can you just stay there, please, because we're gonna move right into the Employee of the Month for September, for Mr. Griffin. Forgot, you're back, Michael. Welcome back.
Welcome back, Michael.
I'm back, Mr. President. Oh, that's kind. Thank you. For those of you who've been here a while, you know that this is one of the favorite things that is within my wheelhouse of responsibilities. I love that the council does this, and I love the ways in which we try to commend the entire workforce by selecting each month from a different department, someone to recognize that does really the heavy lifting of service to the people of Maryville. So I was trying to think of what I wanted to say tonight, and I've been reading a lot of Frederick Buckner lately. Frederick Buckner is a religious guy who actually started out as a writer. He wrote and wrote and wrote, was quite a great author. And late in life, he had a moving religious moment, became ordained, and he's the pastor's favorite in many churches. He never had his own church, but because he wrote so brilliantly, pastors always wanted him to come and supply their pulpit and share a little bit. And he said something for me that I love, for example, that the place of your deepest joy, when it intersects with the place of the community's great need, that's how you know you're doing your vocation. I love that. It's about ministry, but really it's about why I'm in public life, whether it's appointed or elected. I thought of something, though, for tonight's worker that we're going to honor as Employee of the Month. Buckner once said that, "When thinking of your vocation, where your feet take you is who you are." And boy, I am sure glad that Ms. Brecklaw-Zany's feet take her to the Stormwater Management Office every day to help us deliver those services. So I'm gonna ask the executive director of the Stormwater Management Department to join me to read the certificate, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Brecklaw-Zany if she's here. There she is. Would you come up, please, so that we can celebrate you?
This is a certificate of recognition for Employee of the Month, September 2025. This certificate is proudly presented to Adra Brecklaw-Zany. Adra consistently demonstrates a high level of commitment and unwavering work ethic to ensure the department remains effective and provides the highest level of service for our community. She methodically completes all tasks assigned and is always willing to go above and beyond, and is extremely proficient in all aspects of her duties as our office manager. I have been absolutely impressed by her ability to learn and excel with all the challenges we endure as a utility with only four staff members. So I am proud to award this on the 23rd day of September 2025 to Adra. And there you go. Well deserved.
Congratulations, Adra.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nicely done. Thank you, guys.
Moving on tonight to public comments. If you have a public comment, please queue over by the podium, and we allow three minutes for public comment. Does anyone have a public comment tonight?
And I have a concern. I have got a list that there are three data centers being proposed for the town of Maryville. Is that true? Can anybody confirm, deny, or are we standing behind a non-disclosure agreement?
No, we've been approached by three different developers. That's correct.
Yes. I got that, yeah, I got that list here, too.
Okay.
So are, so they have, they have approached the town?
They have, yes.
Okay. And any idea where that might be?
Sure.
Uh, there's one on the north side of 101st Avenue, sir, east of Beaver Dam Ditch.
Okay.
The large building that was built by Crow Holdings.
Okay.
Uh, is one. There is one proposed in back of Polycon Industries and Modern Forge.
Okay.
Which actually is gonna enter off of Clay Street, I believe, or possibly Harms Road.
Okay.
And then there's 96 Acres in Ameriplex on the south side of 93rd Avenue in back of Pinnacle Hospital that's owned by the Misner Group.
Okay, so how are we gonna handle the water and the Nippsco?
Well, the town doesn't, so...
I know, but it's raising everybody's rates. And, you know, are we just gonna keep pushing people out of town? That's, you know, that lets, that's what these data centers are gonna do. They've already been shut down in Balpo, they've already been shut down in Union Township, Chesterton. They're just pushing people out. We need to keep an eye on that. Nobody's building any in Gary. I wonder what that is about? Be a thing. Gotta be another reason. So, that's it. All I wanted to know, there's some truth to what I got from Indianapolis, so thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Franz. I live on Marshall Place in Lincoln Gardens, or Young America, whatever. I have a concern. Yesterday, I came home from a road trip, and there was a critter digging holes underneath my slab house, and it was huge. It wasn't a gopher, and it wasn't a chipmunk. So I kind of determined it had to be a groundhog or woodchuck, and I believe it is coming from the plighted houses that I live around, or live around me. However, I don't know why anybody's living in them. They are in such bad shape, and nobody is doing anything to enforce any codes about taking care of these places. We have cars over there that are not running, we have lawns that aren't cut for months at a time. Place is getting really bad, and now that this thing is starting to pick on me, and I keep my yard decent, and I try to keep a decent house, I don't know what to do with it. Do I pull out the sidearm and let it have it? I've gotta do something to protect myself, because he dug up a, probably a size of, half the size of the time capsule. That's how much dirt he dug up already in two days. So what do I do about it?
Chief, have we had calls there? Have we looked at that area? Do you know?
There's several, there, as far as, well, let's start with what we're talking about. Are we talking about the problem with the, what do we do with the...
Well, the problem is that it seems that these critters are coming from the areas that are not being tended to and taken care of.
Sure. As far as the critters go, one of the, one of my recommendations would be to get some type of an exterminator or a trap or...
That's gonna cost me money, and I'm a senior citizen on a fixed income, as everybody always says.
I get that, and I understand that, but that's something that is natural. We don't control that, right? But as far as the houses that are in need of attention, we can. I can get with you after the meeting, and I can take down what address or what locations that you're referring to, and they're probably being cited. These houses are being...
I know some of them have been cited, but it seems that there's, there's just too many ways to get around it.
I get it. So, but that's what we are. So if we do, we wanna talk, we could talk, and then we could come up with some type of an action plan.
Yeah, I hope you can have some action, because I know how to get action. I've done it before. I spoke to the president of Chrysler years ago, because I said something to Chrysler about the way they treated me, and the vice president called me and said, "Hey, how can we make you happy?" And that's what I wanna hear from here. I wanna know how I can be made happy.
I will, I will gladly speak with you and tell you what available options we have that we can to help you, and we can go from there.
All righty. I'll be waiting. Thank you.
Brian S. Arch, E68 Place. I would like to start off with something I wasn't planning on, is the data centers. I was part of Mr. Bella's Data Center Residential Council. Data centers are gonna be good for our community. These inflated things about water usage and electrical usage are almost silly. This is a business. A business is going to wanna make money, and it's not gonna waste electricity, and it's not going to waste water. This is gonna be a windfall. And while I don't necessarily always agree with town council, I'm glad that we are doing this. And everyone is fully aware that I'm not always on the same page as Mr. Pettit, but he, this is one instance where he is 1,000% correct. These data centers are gonna help our community. The one thing that I did want to address today is, as we start just meeting and we start talking about taxes and property taxes and all that, we kind of went through this last year. And one of the things that has not happened since last year is just some communication, just some talk. And while we have had tax talks, et cetera, what we haven't had is commitment. And one of the biggest takeaways from me from last year's conversation was, there was a lot of people who were disgruntled about the possibility of paying more, but the biggest thing is, is what are we, what's the takeaway? What do we get? We're talking about large corporations getting tax breaks, and we, the property owners, are not. So in my mind, it's like, where's the commitment? Our fire department, we're building fire departments, and we don't have fire guys to staff them. We have Independence Hill, we have Ainsworth, we have North Maryville. Those are not typically staffed. We need firefighters. We have our police department, some of the lowest paid in Lake County and in the state. We need to be thinking about, hey, if we're charging higher taxes, how about we commit? We're gonna give these guys something that's their, their worth. We talk about amenities, and I know that a lot of people have talked about many things, splash pads, et cetera. But the thing of it is, is where are these things at? We've collected over $2 million in food and beverage tax. And last week, Mr. Pettit brought up something that the Little League fields are being turned into warehouses, and it kind of hit me hard, because I grew up on those Little League fields. I played for Geis and Funeral Home. Our rival was Prusen Funeral Home. Other teams that we played against were like Dairy Queen. Where are the businesses at sponsoring any teams? We don't have that anymore. The things where people are coming together, we need to start focusing on those things and make that a part of the conversation, so that it's not just, your taxes are going up, you're paying more. We need to start committing to these things. We're gonna commit to, say, the, the fire memorial at 73rd Madison. We're gonna commit to parks. We're gonna commit to recreations. That's what we need to. That way, there's a balance to, it's not just a heavy-handed, we're raising taxes. It's also, this is what we're gonna get for this taxes. This is where we're trying to do, this is what we're trying to build. And I think that communication would go a long way to bring down the temperature of the topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Hi, Amy Scholberger, 6950 Delaware. I don't know much about what's going on with the borrowed money, but I guess we are borrowing $15 million for the new fire station, when, like Brian was mentioning, about the fact that we're understaffed in the fire department, and we're still hiring a lot, and we're not getting those staff members, and we still aren't getting volunteers from neighboring fire stations. So I'm just a little concerned why we're spending $15 million to build another fire station when we don't have people to staff that building, and we're still getting people from other...
Well, we don't yet, but I think we're actually fully staffed in both our police and fire departments. Is that right, Michael? I don't think there's any openings in either one of those departments.
No, Mr. President. The authorized strength for full-time component in the fire department is 14. We have 14. And the full-time complement for the police department, whether that's adequate or not, is 65. And to my knowledge, we are at 65.
We are, yeah.
The fire department, I can speak to, I had to do this for the HOA that you had me stand in for you that one Saturday. They do believe they have the existing staff to staff it. It's actually going to replace an existing station that is on the, I think that is the westernmost part of, of Maryville. And the goal, thank you, that's it. And the idea is, is by moving it closer to where the development is occurring and where the center of development is, we actually will keep or lower our ISO rating, which actually helps your house insurance. So that is really the rationale behind that. And it's really not an additional firehouse, but a replacement for one that's gonna be decommissioned following the construction of the new one. And they believe that they can staff it with the existing staff levels, a combination of full-time, fire force, paid-on-call, and volunteer, part-time and volunteer. I have to get that distinction, because they have three tiers in our fire department. And they do hope that they'll be able to fully staff it at some point, but they don't, they have not asked for that without the understanding that they've gotta make it work with the existing force that we have at this time.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And one other thing, Mr. President, so everyone knows.
Sure, Mr. Pettit.
The $15 million fire station, number one, it was a recommendation, strong recommendation by both fire chiefs, Lilly and Yurga, and that is part of a $33 million RDA bond issue, which is not going against the taxpayers. It's coming out of the allocation areas of all the big boxes, all the Ameriplex, and all the silos at Sanders Farm. When they pay their taxes, they're paying the debt service, not the residents of the town of Maryville. That was structured that way.
That's right.
Because we knew they were gonna be paying large amounts of tax bills once their abatements start coming into effect. So it's a good, it's a good thing for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Moving on tonight, members, to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable register voucher approval for September 23rd, the approval of the town council meeting minutes of September 9th, and the purchase approval request memo, $33,000 for the street department replacement tanker, subject to appropriation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of Mrs. Yuzlak. Chair, recognize Mr. Pettit for a second to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Open for discussion. Hearing then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to special orders, we do have a public hearing on matters which require legal notice. This is in reference to ordinance 25-31, which is the 2026 budget. I would like to ask the town attorney for verification if this was published before we open public hearing.
We have reviewed the proofs of publication. They are in order at this time. The public hearing is deemed necessary.
Very good. Just for more references, 2531 is the 2026 advertised budget, and I'll call on Trista, our financial advisor, just for a quick synopsis of what we're doing here and why, Trista.
Well, I expected to...
It's working, it's working.
Oh, it is? Okay, very good. Thank you. Overall highlights are that the, first, the town's assessed value grew by $100 million from last year's determination to this year's determination, which is to the benefit, of course, the property owners and to the town as a whole. There were some communities that already have had their assessed value drop due to SB 1, or State Enrolled Act 1, technically now as it stands. And so I was very heartened to see that in this particular immediate stage of the effect of that new legislation, the town was not hit as hard as it could have been. That is, for the town, a 4.07% growth, and for the fire territory, a 4.05% growth. Of course, the territory encompasses part of, part of the territory encompasses Ross Township, which is why that percentage is always just slightly different. The maximum levy, levy being the property taxes that the town receives from those who pay their property taxes, whether it be residential renters or rental properties or businesses that won 2% and 3% tax gaps, that growth will be $336,370 this year. That is a state-regulated percentage, and so the town will be allowed to collect that additional money to then return services to the residents of the town of Maryville. That levy is split across the town's general fund, the police pension fund, and the RDC general fund in small part. The vast majority of it stays with the general fund, which is where the vast majority of the services are paid for to service the residents of the town. The general fund, as a current budget, is listed at $13,254,000. That amount we expect will be turned back yet by the council as they work through the necessary expenses. We want to make sure that the council is passing, if at all possible, a balanced budget, meaning the revenues we expect to receive next year will cover the expenses that are planned. There is some cash balance in the general fund, but for the safety of the residents in future planning, it is best to keep that cash balance whenever possible for emergencies. The levy that will be requested for the general fund, then, is $8,600,000. The difference between those two values, the $5 million-ish, or possibly $4 million, really, more realistically, is made up with other revenues that the town collects, miscellaneous revenues, such as planning and building fees. There's a whole variety of things, some different court fees factor into it, a variety of things that as a user, as a resident, needs, they pay a fee for. And so that comes back to the town to be able to provide those services. There are a variety of other funds that are advertised in the budget as well, including debt service, the wheel tax. Of course, the Parks Department has its own fund to provide services for parks and recreation, also involving the Dana Barber White Community Center. The roads are handled through, in part, the motor vehicle highway fund, the local road and street fund, which are, those revenues are generated by the gasoline tax we all pay at the tax pump, at the gas pump, excuse me. Also, your roads are part funded by the TIF districts. So some of the money that's collected in those areas help fund for the upkeep of your streets as well. If there are any specific questions, I think that really would be the overall summary highlight, other than to add that the fire department does have its own fund, to which some taxes go as well, and Stormwater has its own fund to provide services that it provides, which are on your property tax bill in a little bit different fashion.
Thank you, Trista. We'll now open it up for public hearing. If anyone has a comment on what was proposed here for the 2026 budget, now is your time to speak to us. Please approach the podium and state your name.
Brian S. Arch, 68th Place. I'd like to offer a gentle rebuff to the idea that our 14-person fire department is fully staffed. Maryville has a population larger than 57% of the counties in the state of Indiana. The only entity larger than Maryville in Lake County is the city of Gary. We need more fire personnel. Our chief stood here at this podium not even a year ago, asking for more fire personnel. He personally asked that we should be adding one or two people. I think that that's a fair expectation that we should figure out within our budget to provide. Our, when, in 1990, when I was Maryville police cadet, we had about 60 officers. Flash forward a million years later, well, for me, it feels like a million years. I'm getting old. We still have that. And I'm pretty sure that if you asked any of the officers, "Hey, could you use some more officers?", I'm pretty sure all of them would nod, "Yes, we could." That's what our budget should reflect. We should have more firefighters, better paid, more fire, or more police, better paid, and start thinking about filling in these gaps, because Maryville's only getting bigger. We're growing. We have... these gaps, because Merrillville's only getting bigger. We're growing. We have industry coming to town. We need these things, and now is the time to be planning for them in our budget.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment on the budget? Hearing none, we will close the portion of the public hearing, and I think we'll take up this ordinance later in the agenda, as it's listed. Moving on to another public hearing tonight for ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-six, Mr. Svetnov.
This is an RDC ordinance for additional appropriations. So at this time, I have reviewed the proofs of publication. They are in order, and the public hearing is proper.
Thank you, Joe. This is for a proposed spending of a total of seventy thousand dollars. It is additional monies in excess of the current budget, and since it involves finances, we need to have a public hearing. So we'll open it up for public comment right now on this ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-six. Is there any public comment? Seeing no one approach, I'll close the public comment portion. And again, we'll take this up later in the agenda. Moving on tonight to standing committee reports, budget and finance, Councilor Neal.
There's no additional report tonight, President Bella. Thank you.
Thank you. Street Department and Park Maintenance, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. The street department is still doing sealed, cracked sealing, and that goes from Seventy-third Avenue, from Mississippi Street, to the Sherrville border. The machine that they were using broke down last week.
Oh.
So they had to get that fixed. So that put them back a little bit on the time element. But they're out there doing it, and they're still doing park maintenance. They finished up ranch pickup, as far as I know, and they are paving streets on the north end of Merrillville right now. And that's all I have to report, sir. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Yuzlak.
Sure.
Moving on to council affairs, Councilor Pettit.
No report, Mr. President, other than Michael, obviously, is back. He provided me one ordinance that the committee needs to look at, and I think, Michael, you and Joe and I, once you're, you're back in the swing of things now, there are some other ordinances that we need to tackle. So let me know, gentlemen, and I'll call the committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Councilor Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jerry, do you still have openings at the community center?
We do. We start interviews next week for the recreation attendant position in the community events manager position, and then, I believe, site supervisor, full-time and part-time, is still open to apply, and it'll close Thursday this week, I believe.
So those are the open positions for the town of Merrillville. You can also find those on the My Merrillville app. You can also go to merriville.in.gov and look under HR for open positions. Anything that's open in the town of Merrillville will be posted there. So if you meet the qualifications and you would like to apply, please, please feel free to do so. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thanks, you, Councilor Hardaway. Moving on to environmental affairs, Councilor Yuzlak.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I met with Bill Emerson, the Lake County surveyor, last week. We had a huge tree that fell in the fourth ward in Kaiser Ditch. Oh, you heard about it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So anyway, Bill had his crew, Chris was in charge of the crew, and they spent a couple of days cleaning it up, and they got the tree out. And they also cleaned up the rest of Kaiser Ditch on the county side. So that concludes my report. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Public Safety, Councilor Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Elections, Public Relations, and Town Beautification, Councilor Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. The only announcement I have is just a trinkle treat that will be scheduled for October twenty-third at the Dean and Barbara Community Center, and it starts at five-thirty, and the information has been posted on the app as well as the town's website.
Nice. It was a great event last year, I remember.
Yeah, it was. It was a really nice event. That's all.
Economic Development, Councilor Pettit.
Thanks, Mr. President. We had a redevelopment commission meeting. Part of the agenda was the approval of the next installment for the Merrillville Community School Corporation grant, the four-hundred thousand dollars, that that check, Mr. January, I hope, will be cut tomorrow or Thursday. We'll get that over to Dr. Suggs. Also, we did the resolution at the RDC, which is related to the ordinance, Mr. President, that you had the public hearing on, on the additional appropriation. And finally, I'm sure many of the council knows, or at least I hope they know, that the, the bonds were sold. Eric should have the money setting up the accounts. And again, that goes to the fire station, the Whitcomb Street improvements, and the local road and street. Margie alluded to paving. That will go for the subdivision streets, the rest of the subdivision streets in the different wards, so.
Super. Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Utility Liaison, Councilor Leona Chandler Felton.
No report, President Bella.
Okay. Parks Recreation and Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
I'll just make a brief announcement, and then Jerry can go into his department report. He and I and Michael decided to reschedule the committee meeting for this Thursday to the following Thursday. There's a scheduling conflict. There's an awards ceremony that one of our employees is up for a rose award. Congratulations. So that'll be October second at five o'clock at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. And then I'll let Jerry report on any further happenings later.
Thank you. Special Committees tonight, abandoned and blighted properties, Councilor Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report at this time.
Special Town Projects, Councilor Neal.
I have no report on that tonight.
Semi-Quincentennial Committee, Councilor Hayes Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few volunteers who have signed up to help be on this committee. This project will take place this year, well, upcoming year, 2026, for the Fourth of July, semi-quincentennial special event that takes place all over the United States of America. If you choose to be a part of this committee, please email me at S-H-E-D-W-A-R-D-S at merriville.in.gov. That is on the website as well, S-H-E-D-W-A-R-D-S at merriville.in.gov. That is all.
Thank you, Senator. Moving on tonight to Department and Commission Reports, Stormwater Management Resources. Our director is Matt Lake. Mr. Lake.
Thank you. Real briefly, we have crews in the Amerplex. They're repairing inlet structures. They should be completed with the work later this week. We are also gearing up for some maintenance and shampled manor this fall with contractor. We are also preparing the bid documents for Ninety-seventh and Grand Boulevard. I was out there the other day looking at it, and I'll be glad when that project is completed in the spring. We are also finishing up our master plan updates. Dan repaid, delivered a check for five-hundred-twenty-nine thousand dollars for reimbursement for the Hickory Ridge Regional Drainage Project. I'm also meeting with a variety of mowing contractors, trying to get more participation for the 2026 mowing season when we seek out quotes for that maintenance. And possibly next Thursday, I've been contacted by Congressman Murvan's office, wants to meet with me at the Stormwater Resource Center, discuss federal funding opportunities and things of that nature. So we'll see what happens. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, what we call NERC C, Councilor Hardaway is our representative.
No report at this time, but I will have one at the next meeting.
Thank you. Lake County Silo Waste Management District, Councilor Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We had a meeting on last Thursday, a rather lengthy meeting. We sat through a couple of presentations, but the announcements would be the household hazardous waste, the last collection for the year is October the eighteenth at Griffith Public Works from nine to eleven a.m. And they are taking, paper shredding will be available. So that's four paper grocery bags per car for paper shredding. In addition to that, the compost this year, they made approximately ten thousand dollars on selling the compost to businesses that were looking for it. It was free to residents. They had a little over a hundred residents last year that came out for compost, but this year they had over three-hundred-and-fifty residents that did receive free compost. In addition to that, one of the presentations that we sat through gave the total residential recycling by community for 2024. Merrillville was somewhere around three-hundred-and-fifty, well, no, three-thousand-five-hundred tons of recycling, which put us probably fifth highest in the, in the areas that they do recycling. So keep up the recycling. And then one of the interesting things that I learned during the presentation, which I honestly did not know, they did a presentation on the plastic water bottles that you people buy. And the interesting information that they shared with us was that the bioplastics break down from the water bottles, and they're finding them in major organs within your body, including your brain, your heart, your lungs, and in the fetus of unborn children. And so the whole presentation, which I was gladly sharing with you all, the whole presentation was geared toward stop using the plastic water bottles. That was very interesting.
Was this for all water bottles, or was it just for?
Yes. It's for all that little plastic water bottle. I know somebody has one out there. Yes. Yes. They are, they're literally killing you. Lack of better words. Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. So it was a very, very interesting presentation. And they did ask people, when you go to the grocery store, please ask for a brown paper bag. If you want to help out with anything, stop using the plastic grocery bags. Get your recycling bag or use a brown paper bag. So, yeah. So it's very interesting. Normally, a thirty-minute meeting was two hours and thirty minutes due to the presentations that we sat through.
Wow.
But it was very interesting.
Thank you for going and representing us.
Yes. And that's all I have for you.
Need to go home and water the plants.
Get a Stanley or a cup.
Thank you. The Shared Ethics Entity, Councilor Hardaway.
The 2025 Ethics Summit will take place on October thirtieth. It is open to the public. You have to RSVP by October seventeenth. It will be from eight a.m. to eleven-thirty a.m. at the Avalon Manor on U.S. Thirty. So if you would like to know more about ethics and what the shared ethics entity does, they put this on every year, every October. This will be a mayoral panel. So it will be comprised of three mayors from Lake and Porter County and La Porte County. So I hope that people will register and attend, especially my colleagues sitting up here, that everyone registers and attends the 2025 Ethics Summit. That concludes my report.
Ms. Hardaway, would you please pass me that bottle? We need to dispose.
No, and I'm gonna drink out of it.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
Oh, no. Okay, Mrs. Neal and Ms. Hardaway, the Fire Territory Board, you have the floor.
We have a meeting tomorrow.
Try that again.
In unison. Did you guys practice that? Clerk Trezor's report, Mr. January.
Sure. Year-to-date, we've spent seventy-four percent of our budget. The Food and Beverage Fund is still the same as the last time I reported, two million, two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and forty cents. The bond proceeds, we had over thirty-three million dollars in bond proceeds. The town is rated double-A, which is the second highest among the S&amp;P five-hundred. And one thing about the bonds, they're broken up into three series, as Mr. Pettit has alluded to. Fifteen million of it was going towards building the fire station. The other eighteen million, basically, is going towards the roads. Six million is dedicated to the town repairing the worst roads throughout all of the wards. So we have a rating system, which, if Steve King was here, where they determine what roads are gonna be repaired based off of the rating system. And we do it throughout the whole town. And six million is going there, and twelve million is going towards the Whitcomb Street extension, which I imagine is gonna be a very large development, is gonna have a very large park in it.
And one thing I wanted to clarify, because I think many people know that I wasn't necessarily for TIFs. And I think the major thing that I had with TIFs is just the duration of some of the abatements. I didn't think that everybody was deserving of a ten-year abatement, but that's neither here nor there, because the money is flowing in, and the TIFs are paying for these bonds. So I just really wanted to make, make that clear, because if the town had to pay for a majority of this stuff, we probably would be going without. And the way the town's budget is set up, having a TIF actually benefits the town, because the town is, the TIF is able to capture all of the growth. Whereas if it was with the town, it would basically, if all of these properties that are in the TIF became part of the Merrillville town, it would reduce everybody's taxes. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be a addition of taxes. It would reduce the burden that each of us is paying. So by getting these additional roads and things I paid for is actually benefiting us. So I just want to make that clear. And just in terms of my report, I believe that is it for today.
Great. Chaz, we have our soundbite for the website. It was a beautiful presentation about TIF districts and the benefits that they provide. So thank you, Mr. January.
You're welcome.
Move on, moving on to the South Shore Convention and Visitors. There's no report tonight. And Department Reports, Jerry from the Parks and Recreations.
Thank you. Upcoming programs, youth volleyball is still taking registration. We have youth and adult art classes coming up, line dancing on Wednesdays, yoga, breakfast and bingo is every Tuesday morning at eight, or nine a.m. And update on facilities, I know we've been talking about some of these items for a while, but the community room walls and the walls outside the locker rooms are gonna be painted next Thursday into next Saturday, so the second through the fourth. ICC floors and core are finalizing their agreement to get the, all the floors replaced that are not doing so well. The rock wall will be serviced October twentieth, and they're gonna do a little staff training when they come out as well, so we can get that back up and running. The tunnel under thirty on the E and L, Steve and I have been talking about what's best for the lighting issue there. I just got a email from Mitch Barlow, Barloga, saying that he's getting complaints there as well. So I have two quotes in, and I'm waiting on a third, and then we'll go from there. And that's it for now.
Thank you. Anything else to add, Mr. Pettit?
Nope.
Moving on to the Police Department, Chief Newses. Did someone steal your name tag?
No.
I was gonna say, you should call the Police Department.
Mike's a detective. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start off and just touch on what Councilor Yuzlak was talking about earlier. She's talking about some of these streets that are being paved and redone. There are signs out there informing people not to park in those areas. We have been having a problem, especially in the north end of town, where people are parking, and it's creating a backup of the plan. So they're backing, they're not, they're not able to get what they need done, so they have to call us out. So please, if you see signs, don't park your cars there. We don't want to be the bad guys. We don't want to impound your cars. We don't want to tow them out of the way. But if push comes to shove, we're gonna have to do it. So please follow those signs. The second thing that I have to talk about tonight is I want to, I want to say that I had the opportunity to meet with the Director of the Merrillville Community School Corporation, and we talked and discussed about this new thing that we were wanting to put together. It's our Protect Our Schools. Some of you may have seen it on our social media page. In the wake of everything that has happened over the last few weeks, I think that it is imperative for us to focus on school safety. The safety of our children, of our school staff, is of utmost importance for this community. No matter what we do, I feel that there's never enough. While what we do have now is sufficient, and it has proven to be effective, I don't feel it's enough. I'm one of those people that's always looking for something more and something better. So this whole Protect Our Schools idea came up in my head. This was something that was started originally by Deputy Chief Lilly of the Merrill Fire Department. And I want to take off of what great job he did and what he put together, and just keep taking it further. I want this to be a living action plan and constantly be modified, constantly be advanced. So this is something that we will have in place for the future. And after meeting with the school director, I want to say I felt it was a successful meeting. So we're gonna continue to move forward with this. We're gonna form a committee, and it's gonna consist of police and some of the safety, I can't remember the actual name for the group at the schools, but the safety committee that they have. And I would like to meet every quarter so we can go over some of our plans and have something in place, and God forbid something bad was to happen. That's all I have.
Great idea. Thank you, Chief. Planning and Building Department. Great idea. Thank you, Chief. Planning and Building Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer this evening our building report as of September one, twenty twenty-five. The Planning and Building Department has issued nine hundred and fifty permits. Of those permits, one hundred and ninety-five were commercial, seven hundred and thirty-one were miscellaneous improvement, eleven single-family, and thirteen duplexes. Total cost of construction in the town of Maryville estimated at eighty-four million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and of that, the total fees collected is sixty, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty cent, as we go into the last quarter of our building. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sheila. And finally, our Town Manager, who is back, and welcome back, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you.
Thank you for that as well. Mr. President, you have before you and members of the council the monthly report from staff. This is compiled by the Administrative Manager, Ms. Rosas. Unless you have a question for me with regard to this, I'll be very pleased to be seated.
You have a seat, sir. Moving on tonight to General Orders, we have First Reading Ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-nine. It's the ordinance of the town of Maryville, providing that the zoning ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, be amended by changing the established R-two residential zoning district classification to a planned unit development. Ms. Schein, anything else to add to this? Or Mr. Pettit?
No, Mr. President. The developer has completed everything. He has had his plat recorded. His attorney is here to represent him this evening. He said his plat recorded, and he's also updated the date on his covenants as requested by our attorney. Anything else, Councilor?
Just for point of reference for the other council members, Margie and Leona and I saw this. This is actually at the old Broadmoor Country Club on the north side of U.S. Thirty, residential development going in there. With that said, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five twenty-nine.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit with a second by Mrs. Uselak for approval, ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-nine. Am I accurate? This is a first reading, right? We didn't see this yet. Yeah.
Mr. President, it doesn't require anything more than your action. It's an ordinance from zoning.
Right. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
It's the only reading we're going to have on this.
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council? Any comments from the developer?
No, we're just grateful for the.
Please, a podium for the microphone, sorry.
I should.
Because we've recorded.
I don't want to take your time, but Scott Yeney, I'm the attorney for the developer, and participated in the process. It's been a long time. We appreciate your patience. There were some conservancy district issues to work out and make sure that the, if there was development to the rear, to the north of this property, there would be access, and there were some engineering things to work through, but I thank everyone for your patience, and I think this will be a great development for the town.
Great. Thank you. We're making everyone speak tonight, so. Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, this is the ordinance. We need a voice vote. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
Council, President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. Another first reading ordinance, we have ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-one. It is the ordinance of the town budget for twenty-twenty-six, as described and explained earlier in the meeting. Chair will recognize or chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Mrs. Uselak for a motion.
Second.
Second by Councilor Neal. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Sure. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Before I vote, I do have a comment, just so the residents know. We did plan for and are going to be spending some of the food and beverage tax money. It's in the budget for next year. So we are going to start with a plan, a spending plan, for the food and beverage money that's coming in. So I vote aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to second reading ordinances, we have ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-six. It is the ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the RDC general fund for the year twenty-twenty-five, not included in the current budget. This was the seventy thousand dollar fund that we talked about and had public comment on earlier tonight.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Councilor Uselak for approval of ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-six. Questions or comments on that motion? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Sure. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Motion carries. That concludes our ordinances. We do have one resolution this evening. It's a resolution providing for the treasurer of appropriation balances from and among major budget classifications in the Human Resources Department of the General Fund, as requested by the proper officer, and forwarded to the town council for its action pursuant to Indiana Code. This is a general HR employee appreciation, three hundred dollar decrease, and increase in the HR longevity of three hundred dollars. The net effect is zero. This is some general housekeeping.
So moved.
Second.
Chair will recognize Councilor Sheehan for the second, Mr. Pettit for the motion. Thank you, for Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-five. Any questions or comments from the council?
Aye.
Hearing none, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries. We will transfer three hundred dollars. We have no old business tonight. There's no new business. I do have two announcements. The town council meeting will be October fourteenth at six-thirty, and a reminder about the trunk or treat at October twenty-third at five-thirty at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Uselak.
You're welcome.
We adjourn. Thank you all.